Okay, I'd like to go ahead and start our meeting. Thank you for joining us tonight. Today is Monday, April 14th, and this is a regular meeting of the Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education. I'm going to go ahead and ask for the approval of the agenda.
That the agenda of Monday, April 14th, 2014 Board of Education meeting be approved to set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Your second, please.
Okay.
Okay, this is a roll call action. Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Lafferty?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
President Meisterlin?
Aye.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and start this meeting with three public hearings. And at this time, I would ask Laurel if you've received anything on any of the items that we have for a public hearing tonight?
I have received nothing in writing.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and open up the first one. This will be for 2014 roof improvements at Cleveland Elementary, Erskine Elementary, Hoover Elementary, and Kennedy High School. This is the time and place for people to come and speak to the board about any of these roof replacement items. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close out that public hearing. Open up our second public hearing, which is the fiscal year 2013-14 budget amendment. You can look at your pertinent facts for information on those, on that item. Again, this is time for a public hearing. Anyone that wishes to address our board, please come to the podium at this time. Seeing none, we will close this public hearing. Open up our third public hearing, which is the fiscal year 2014 and '15 certified budget. Again, the pertinent facts are in your board packet and available to the public. Does anyone want to address our board at this time? Again, seeing none, we will close that public hearing. Go to superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening. I am pleased to welcome members of the Jefferson High School Academic Decathlon Team to tonight's meeting. The team took first place in the state decathlon competition held last month, and the team also claimed 39 of possible 90 individual medals at state contests, and many of the students are adorning their medals right now. They're now preparing to represent the state of Iowa in the 33rd National Academic Decathlon Competition later this month. Please welcome the decathlon team and Coach Kevin Darrow to tell us more about their program.
It'll be a little noisy. I'd like to introduce the team members. Nate Weger, Zach Denny, Alexandria McPhail, Hashim Asman, Chase Muensenmeyer, Drake Crambeer, Noah Kilbury, Daniel Nguyen, Quinn McElveany, and Garrett Bassinius. And real quickly, just to give you a little background of what academic decathlon is, it's an academic competition based around one central theme. So every year, the theme changes. Some years, it's a time period; some years, it's a location. So this last year was World War I. And so the students spent time studying 10 different subjects based around World War I. So we did math, art, music, economics, history, I'm missing a bunch, language arts, science. The science this year was biology, genetics, and then both speech, a prepared speech, an essay, and an interview. I believe that was 10 somewhere. And I'll let the students talk to you because you probably don't want to listen to me speak.
Do you guys have any questions?
Make sure that you speak into the microphone.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
Well, do we have any questions? Alan, I know you do.
I love this. Good job, guys. What was the best experience?
For me, I enjoyed going to Des Moines. Honestly, that was when we all kind of got to study together, and we were all like in our hotel rooms, and we just kind of like laying on the beds, like studying, and like, I don't know, and we like spent like a day and a half just studying all day and hanging out and eating junk food, and it was kind of fun.
Another fun part of that is when we study. Every Wednesday, we usually bring our own food so we can kind of like just eat together. We kind of become a family and study together like throughout almost eight months of studying. It's really neat how we can all get together and get to know each other better.
Can you tell me what grade levels all of you are? What grade you're in?
All of us are seniors, except Chase and Drake are juniors.
Okay. Have you all been on this same team together for the last number of years?
This is everybody's first year.
Everyone's first year. What a remarkable finish that you had to your season. Where is your national competition?
Honolulu, Hawaii.
We kind of knew that since we approved that trip at our last meeting. I just wanted to hear you say that out loud. And are all of you able to make that?
Yeah.
And are you anxious in studying? Is it the same topic that you will be covering when you're in Hawaii?
Same topic. We've been studying ever since state ended. We took maybe one day off, and then we got right back to studying.
Wow.
A little bit of the format of the contest?
Yeah, talk about, tell us about the format of the contest that you'll be in in Hawaii. How does that work? How many schools are represented?
It's based off of GPA. We're basically split up into three different groups. There's the A category, which is honors, so that'd be 4.0, is it? Yeah, pretty much 4.0 and up. There's B, which would be scholastic, which is like a 3.0 or Bs. And then C, the C category, like if you get Cs, so it's like a 2.0 and up or something like that.
Okay.
So basically, there are going to be three people from each category that compete, and then they take the top two scores from each category and add them up. So there are six total people, and for the 10 subjects, add up all the scores, and then I guess they total that as a team, and that's your team score.
Okay. And then how many schools are represented? Do you know?
There should be 36 teams at Nationals, plus I think three Chinese teams, and then one team from London.
Wow. Is this a multi-day event over what period of time?
Yeah. On, we'll have speech and interview on a Wednesday, and then you have, we've already taken art, the art test and the essay online. So the other six tests, we'd have to take on Friday. And then Saturday morning, they have the awards banquet and everything to figure out how we do, and then we'll know there how we did.
So how many of your parents are going to chaperones?
Parents are going.
Okay. Dave, you had other questions, comments?
Just going this far is a unique experience that a lot of students don't get the opportunity. So what are you doing that is educational besides eating and studying and doing the test? What will you be doing while you're there that supports your educational experience?
Well, I think the best thing education-wise about decathlon is that you learn good study habits. Like, most of the stuff that we learn won't be useful ever.
Are you talking about general school stuff?
But like for college, this will be a same workload, if not a lot bigger. So it'll learn how, or teach us how to balance our time better so we can kind of, I don't, like, it makes college a lot easier, prepares better.
Now, do you have any sidebar trips planned? The Arizona Museum or anything?
We like to hit Pearl Harbor. We'd like to stop by. We're a pretty tight time crunch. We have no time Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Wednesday, Saturday. So we have an eight-hour window. Wednesday, I promise that I will make this entire time. I'd like to do at least one nice educational trip. And then give it some time on the beach for hours.
Sure.
We are so, so proud of all of you. This is why all of us are here, is to provide these kinds of opportunities to our students across our district. And so when you come out and you excel at the rate that you have, it just reinforces to us that what we're doing is good. Not everything in school is applicable to life, but curiously, you'll find later in life that it really is. So thank you very much for your time and your commitment to this work. I know debate is one of the hardest things to be involved in, so we really admire you and appreciate your effort. So thank you and represent us well, and have a good time on the beach and have plenty of food. Have plenty of food. Any other questions or comments? Okay, and thank you for joining us tonight, too.
And I'm sure they're going to go study right now.
Probably are.
It's always great to see our wonderful kids and our students. That's, that's great. Going on to the next, our four district high schools have set a milestone for litter collection and community pride. Each school community has adopted a section of road to keep free from litter as part of the Adopt a Road program. We understand that ours is the only multi-high school district in Iowa where all of the high schools have adopted a road or highway. It's really a wonderful thing for our students and staff to be involved with, keeping our community clear of litter and supporting being environmentally friendly. Tonight, it is my extreme pleasure to congratulate Gary Hatfield, Principal of Taft Middle School, on being named the 2014 Iowa Middle Level Principal of the Year by the School Administrators of Iowa. Gary has served as Taft Principal since 2008 and has been an outstanding leader within the district and for the Taft Middle School community. Further, I'm also pleased to congratulate Steve Graham. Steve recently received the 2014 Iowa Association of School Business Officials Professional Leadership Award. This award recognizes a school business official who has demonstrated excellence in service to the school community, the school district, and the profession. Steve has served as a business official in Iowa's public schools for 27 years, 17 of those serving the Cedar Rapids Community School District. As a state honorary, he will receive an ASBO Scholarship of $1,000 to present to a graduating high school senior from one of the Cedar Rapids schools, entering either education or business as a course of study. The Youth Port Organization, a partnership between Tannager Place Boys and Girls Club of Cedar Rapids and Young Parents Network, recently hosted a book signing at Polk Alternative Education Center. Fourth and fifth grade members of the Boys Club wrote and illustrated a comic book entitled, "The Boys and Girls Club Conquers Eight Assets." Later this spring, Young Parents Network will host a book giveaway in partnership with the Cedar Rapids Public Library to promote literacy. It's always nice to see positive things happen with our partners, and we're pleased to support their efforts and provide the space for the programming at Polk Alternative Education Center. Next, Kennedy High School Happiness, Inc., show choir was named third runner-up at the show choir Nationals competition in Nashville, Tennessee. Happiness Director Storm Ziegler was named Director of the Year. Washington High School Momentum Show Choir was named fifth runner-up at the same competition. Further, looking at our high schools, not only do we have a state championship and representative at a Nationals from Jefferson for the academic decathlon, Washington was rated number one in Iowa high schools by the Washington Post 2014 list of America's Most Challenging High Schools. Cedar Rapids Kennedy was second on the Iowa list. The list is developed by taking a total of the number of advanced placement tests given at the school and dividing by the number of seniors who graduated, and that becomes the ratio that they make this distinction about. About 9% of the 24,000 American public high schools made the list. So it's very elite and competition. We continue to invite the community to join conversations happening at www engagescrschools.com, our community involvement site. Current topics include conversations about criteria used to develop school calendar and the plan for transforming from trimesters to semester schedules for the fall of 2015. So please join us on the Engage CR website. Tell us what you think. All comments will be read by numerous members of the administrative staff. Finally, this evening, I'm pleased to introduce our monthly alumni spotlight feature. We have a rich and diverse group of alumni, and we're proud to applaud their success.
On the 100th anniversary of his birth, the Cedar Rapids Community School District is pleased to celebrate the life and career of Conger Metcalf, renowned American artist and district alumna. Born in Cedar Rapids, Conger Metcalf graduated from Washington High School, where he took numerous art classes and entered a number of competitions while a student. After spending much of the summers of 1932 and 1933 at the Stone City Art Colony, taking classes from faculty including Grant Wood and Marvin Cohen, Metcalf enrolled at Co. College with the intention of becoming a concert pianist. While at Co. College, he also continued his art studies by taking numerous classes from Marvin Cohen. After graduation, Metcalf moved to Boston where he taught piano in addition to taking classes at the School of the Museum of Fine Arts. He returned to Co. College for the 1938-1939 academic year to replace Marvin Cohen, who had taken a year-long sabbatical. The 1940s were filled with travel, first to Mexico and then to Algeria, Naples, and Florence as a serviceman during World War II. After the war, Metcalf returned to Boston and was appointed Head of the Art and Music Department at Dexter School in Brookline. During the 1950s and 1960s, Metcalf established himself as a significant painter in the Boston community, teaching at the School of the Museum of Fine Arts from 1961 to 1973. Throughout this time, Metcalf returned to Italy as often as possible, usually in the summer, where he collected Italian frames to be used with his artwork. All the while, Metcalf maintained close ties to Iowa and Cedar Rapids, visiting frequently and donating numerous works to various cultural and educational institutions. In addition to the collection in the Cedar Rapids Museum of Art, Co. College has a gallery of Metcalf's work in the Stewart Memorial Library. Metcalf's early exposure to Italian art, especially the art of the Italian Renaissance and Baroque, provided to be important to his artistic development. His unique style was developed from his use of thin translucent washes of soft-toned colors of oil pigment on canvas, masonite, or wax paper. Images of young children usually seen sketching, reading, or playing together dominate his work. Still life painting and landscapes were also a part of his artistic output. Marching to his own drummer, Metcalf created a singular body of work that was a unique contribution to the history of American art. The Cedar Rapids Community School District is very proud to include artist Conger Metcalf among our graduates.
That was outstanding. Thank you, John. We do have just terrific graduates of our school district, and we're so proud of them. Okay, next, our board reports. Does anyone? Alan, I know that you were at a national convention. Is there anything you'd like to share?
Yes, the NSBA convention this year, they had a wide variety of best practices, and of course, one that caught my eye was this STEM Academy certification. And so I'm going to bring that forward to you and Dr. Benson. Of course, as I was witnessing these things, I was sending snapshots of things I was seeing to Mary, so she's probably a little overwhelmed. I did not send it to Dr. Benson this year. That was last year I sent things as I saw them and fired them at them as fast as I could. But this year, I really have some good news report on what we're trying to do with the big idea and how that fits together with the STEM Academy.
I did like your pictures, except they were sideways and upside down, so.
I was looking New Orleans.
Teeny tiny print. But I appreciate that you took the time to go, and we look forward to receiving any information that you have on the STEM, particularly that program. Any other board reports? Keith?
I also went to that meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right.
And I thought was really good, hearing Tom Friedman speak was remarkable. And if anybody wants some excerpts of his speech and things he talked about, I'd be glad to pass them on. I do have some items I picked up, like Wei Kuhulaps, and went to one speaker. And we're always looking for people in district level. John Spence talked about change, and he's an excellent speaker, and it's short, simple, and to the point. And Marcia, I have some items I picked up for you at one session I went to, and I thought, well, this one ended, I'll see if that one's still open. And it was also very good. And on doing presentations and some, this lady specializes in using computers and presentations and so on. She has some really, really good items. So there were some really great speakers, and I would encourage all board members to attend these because it opens up your eyes to what's going on around the country and some of the problems. Dr. Benson, there's some issues on law conference, I'll provide that to you as well.
Great, outstanding.
Some real hot points that are out there right now, and there are some really hot points, so. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to attend it. It was really a good meeting.
And you know, keep in mind, Grant Wood, AEA, is always happy to sponsor a speaker and open that up to the whole area, so don't hesitate to contact Joe Crozier and share a name or two if you think it would benefit.
Yeah, I'll present, I'll show you some of his work and so on, and get a second opinion.
Okay, thank you both for going. I appreciate it. Gary?
Yes, it's been a while since we've met, so this was a while back, but I picked up a new term. I found out what a shout-out is, so I want to give a shout-out to our.
It's actually an old term, Gary.
It's an old term, well. Well, thank you for correcting me. To, I attended the show choir. I did get that right. I've been saying swing choir, and that's an old, that is truly an old. But had the opportunity to see all of our three high school show choirs perform and just totally amazed by the dedication, the hard work, the number of kids that are involved or young students, the parental support that we have, the instruments. So just, and especially the directors of those programs. I know we just saw some that received national attention, but truly great work. And from a, as a former physical education teacher, the physical effort, it's a 20-minute aerobic workout, and they were doing sometimes two or three of those during the day. So a great program in addition to what we're doing. And then I had the opportunity to stop and look at the big program last week, and we had some guests from Colorado and Minnesota, and had a chance to hear their comments, but hear a little bit more about the program and the kids. And again, just, I'm really pleased with the efforts we're doing and the direction, and hopefully, as we move forward to expansion, as we move on next year. So a shout-out to the, to the big program.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Also on behalf of the board, we're very proud of Gary Hatfield and Steve Graham and Storm Ziegler, so we thank everyone for their efforts and hard work. Steve, you've been at this a long time and had just have year after year of recognition, so we appreciate that work so much. Any other comments or reports from the board? Okay, next, we'll go to communications, delegations, and petitions, and I would call up Jen Newman. And Jen, just for the record, please state your affiliation and your address, and we've increased your time limit to five minutes, so.
You don't want to do that. My name is Jen Newman. My address is 2051 Linden Drive, Southeast, and I am the Chair of the Cedar Rapids School Foundation for this year and probably next year, I don't know. So I wanted, anything else I need to, did I miss anything there?
You covered it.
My points?
Yep.
I wanted to take a moment and say thank you for inviting me here to update you on what the foundation is doing these days. I'm also a district parent. I have a fourth grader at Johnson School of the Arts, and I have a seventh grader at McKinley, who I'd just like to mention, as long as we're talking about show choir, they swept their whole season, so. It was great, and I learned how to be a stage mom. So I'm sure everybody in this room is familiar with the school foundation, but just in case you're not, I just wanted to kind of say something that I've been saying to people publicly when they ask me, what is the school foundation about? Certainly, I could recite our mission statement. I don't know our mission statement, but certainly, I could give them statistics. But what I like to tell people is that we work to fill or fund the gap when funding falls short of allowing students, classes, educators, when it falls short of participation for them. So what we do is we try to fill that gap, fund that gap, and make sure that everybody gets that experience. And then I go on to say, can you imagine missing out on some of those field trips as a kid because the funding wasn't there? I mean, who doesn't have one of those memories of that field trip that maybe changed your perspective on something or maybe inspired you to your career or where you went to college? So I want to thank you for your support of the foundation, as well as give you an update today. So about a year and a half ago, we went through a pretty rigorous strategic planning session. Year and a half ago? Okay. Karen's here to keep me straight, and she stands right here because a shock collar would be rude, so. But about a year and a half ago, we went through a pretty rigorous strategic planning session where we aligned, where we figured out what our big priorities were and aligned them with the school district. And three of those were engaging our alumni, engaging them with the foundation, engaging them with the district, increasing our community messaging and making sure that people are aware of the foundation and what we do, thus increasing our funding over time, and stabilizing and increasing the funding to the foundation so that we can fill that gap where necessary. So we've been working toward that, and I have to say that our executive director, Karen Swanson, has probably one of the most organized minds I've ever seen, and she keeps us so on task and so focused that I am really proud to say that at every meeting, we look through our strategic plan in the very nice color-coded matrix she provides us with, and we are making progress toward every goal. Every single meeting we have, we've made progress. And I'm, I've sat on a lot of boards and committees in my time, and I just, I want you to know that's really remarkable, and a lot of that is very staff-driven and volunteer-driven, too. So to that end, I want to toss up an opportunity to you. May 10th is Lace Up for Learning. It's a Saturday morning. I'm sure the weather is going to be fabulous for it because we're owed that weather now. And it is a.
5K, right?
5K, 10K, 1 mile.
5K, 10K, 1 mile, and there's a pretty good hill in it. And I would encourage you to not only attend if you're a runner or walker, but also to, and encourage other people to attend, but if you've got the time to join us as a volunteer, I would say it's safe to say we could still use a few volunteers. It's a great opportunity to promote the foundation, but also align with some of the school district priorities and physical education. Just, it's a, it's a really great thing to see that event come together.
May 10th, where?
At Kingston.
At what time?
8:00 AM, right? So that's, all right. Secondly, I wanted to update you on the completion of our recent alumni project. I asked Karen really quick how many additional records we received, and we've got more than 10,000 alumni records, mailable alumni records. And we're trying to, right now, we're kind of sorting through as the foundation, how do we want to use that information to benefit the foundation and the district? So you know, some of that's email, some of it is engagement, but what we really want to do is provide all of the Cedar Rapids alumni an opportunity to engage with the foundation and reengage with their school district, whether they're here or elsewhere. So look for more updates on that in coming months, and I look forward to seeing what we do with that information. So those were the, those were the big things that were on my update list, and I am happy to entertain any questions or comments.
And actually, this is our public comment period, so we just received comments at this time.
Okay.
And thank you for providing that update. And I encourage board members, if you do have questions, to contact Jen directly or Karen, and appreciate your time and effort on the foundation board. Jen, thank you.
If they're math questions, contact her.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I have Tanya Johnson.
Hi, I'm Tanya Johnson, 3816 Riverside Drive, Northeast. What I want to do for my five minutes today is just say thank you to the school board and thank you to Dr. Benson for allowing me the year and almost 18 months that I've had to have a leave to be Iowa's 2013 Teacher of the Year. And this, this 18 months has been. And this 18 months has been a tremendous professional learning experience for me, an opportunity to meet many people that I would have not had the chance to meet, an opportunity to work with the Department of Ed and kind of figure out what they've got going on in their head, and also share with them what teachers want them to know. So it has been, it's been amazing. But what I really want to do right now is remind parents and staff and administrators that it is time for us to do what you've done for me for someone else, because it is time to nominate the 2015 Teachers of the Year. And when you're doing that nomination, it is not a big deal, you write down a few things about them, and you do one-page nomination, and it can be who your child's favorite teacher is, it can be who you thought gave them the most growth, it can be as a staff member, it could be who has worked to help you the most, whatever you want to do for that nomination, because it is really about saying thank you to the teachers that we have in our district. And we have so many tremendous teachers in Cedar Rapids, we should be having 20, if not 30 nominations every year down there, and last year, I'm sad to say, there were no nominations. So we need to really get on that. So what I want to let you know is that you can go to the Iowa Department of Ed website, and it's educateiowa.org, and you can look up Teacher of the Year, and then on that site, they will have a link for you to nominate. You turn that nomination in by the last Friday in April, which is April 25th, and then they will get a lovely letter that says they've been nominated for Teacher of the Year, and they will be so excited to be nominated and be thanked that way. And then at that point, they will decide if they're going to go any further and fill out the pages and pages of application process, but we will have done our duty to thank them for the job they're doing, so thank you.
Tanya, thank you. Congratulations on that year, I can't imagine how fun that would be. Next is our consent agenda, and I'd like to entertain a motion in a second before we discuss.
So move.
Second.
Any items that you'd like to pull for separate consideration or conversation? Yes, Keith?
BA 14246, it's the Iowa School Finance Information Services.
Okay.
I, I do not think that we should pay the fee for this organization, it's duplicative of what the Iowa Association of School Board has, but, and also, our fees to UEN, the UEN also pays to this organization, so it becomes a doubling up in effect for us since we pay to UEN and this organization. And more importantly, and I have to research this further, but they are a for-profit organization, and you know, some of the fiasco that happened with Iowa Association, and open meetings and so on, where we're contributing to a group like this, and they're doing lobbying and work of that type, I just have a legal question of, are we committing to a group that may not be quite operating correctly? I mean, I honestly don't know, but there's enough questions in my mind, I cannot support this group, and I would like to have it as a separate vote.
Okay, other conversation?
We've been part of this organization for a long time, so this is the first time I've heard of any concerns, and I don't know, I'm looking at Steve, you obviously have the opportunity to work with them day in and day out, quite often getting direct advice from them. Is it duplicative in your mind from what we're doing with IASB and other groups?
I certainly can agree with what I've heard Director Westercamp say, that there would be in some ways some duplication of services, but I would also add, you know, knowing Margaret Buckton, and knowing Larry Siegel, and the quality people that they are, and the work that they put into the system, and listening to the webinars on Fridays where they're giving the updates on school finance, where we're at legislatively, there are some of these things that are also offered from the IASB. I guess it's who you prefer to connect with on whatever matter you may be interested in learning more on, and you know, I don't want to get in the crosshairs of Director Westercamp, but I just want to be open and honest with how I feel about ISFIS. I think they're, again, a very quality organization, the IASB is a very quality organization as well, and I think about $3,000, give or take a few, to be a member of ISFIS, you know, I think it's, from my opinion, it's a good value, and with all respect to Keith, which I respect very highly, so, that's, those are my thoughts.
Well, Steve, can I ask you, how often do you use ISFIS services?
On a regular basis, actually. I would say there isn't a week that goes by that I don't get an email, that I look at something that's of interest. They have a pretty cool data tool that provides demographic information to compare us to other schools in Iowa, very user-friendly. There are just some things that I have experienced, I'm not sure whether or not Dr. Benson or Laurel could chime in on what their experiences have been, or anybody else on the executive team here working with ISFIS, but I've been, I've been pleased with their services.
Gary?
I don't know what the timeliness of the, of this request is as far as when we have to renew, could we, could I suggest that we table, and I would like to see a comparison between the two of what the services are through the School Board Association and this organization, and so we can have a comparison between the two, and then also see on paper the, what the financial cost is for both of those, and have those before, before the next meeting when we would act on it.
I think...
Iowa Association of School Boards invoice should be coming fairly soon, that would be coming up before June 30th as well, but I would agree with Steve that their services are somewhat duplicative, but I have found them to be a very useful resource. They also provide information to us on policies, regulations, and procedures, and then of course with legislative matters, and Margaret Buckton has been invaluable to us.
Other comments, John?
I'd just say, you know, after being on the board seven years now almost, I guess, that it has been nice to have a second opinion on some of the things that are coming out of the State House, and the very complicated work that goes on in understanding school finance. So as a board member, I've appreciated this, whether or not everything's done legal or not, I think that that's the question I would still have. I appreciate having the two opinions, and I agree, Margaret, it's invaluable for the work that I think that we do up on the Hill in Des Moines, so.
Let's go ahead and entertain a, I'd like an amended motion that excludes BA 14246. Can I have a motion to approve the consent minus that item?
So move.
In a second, please.
Second.
Okay.
In my second.
And your second?
It's my second because I seconded the original.
You did, that's correct. So this is a roll-call action to approve the consent agenda minus BA 14246. Due to the personnel report, sorry.
Go ahead, sorry. Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to either table or move on item BA 14246. I'd like a motion in a second for one of those items.
I move to table.
Okay, is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I think it's a good idea to table it, to, you know, really look at these services to see, you know, are there services that we should be looking to the Iowa Association for, because there are new people there as well that are really sharp people, and that, you know, if we get benefits for both from them, that's great, I'm just raising the question, I want to be sure that we are, and that the question's raised to me about whether we're paying into the, to this, and then the UEN also is paying into it, and just clarify some of those points. And a big point is how, how we are working on, with the legislatures, apparently not all that effective at times, but I understand the problems there, but you know, are there conflicts that are occurring that we're not speaking with one voice, because I think that's very important.
Okay, I'm going to take a roll-call action on this motion, or else we can capture everyone's vote.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
No.
And Halt?
Aye.
Director Witt?
No.
Director Laberty?
No.
President Meisterling?
No.
So can I entertain a motion to go ahead and approve?
I so move.
Okay.
Second.
And a vote, please, we'll do a roll-call.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
No.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
No.
President Meisterling?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Even though we voted the way we did, we'd still like some information that kind of distinguishes those organizations for us for the future, so if you could put that together, that would be great.
Will do.
Next, I'm going to turn this over to Steve Graham to talk about participation in the equipment breakdown insurance program.
Thank you, President Meisterling, and as Jose McFarlane and Melissa Coffin, now, they've made their way to the podium, they're here right now, I guess I can't use that line. We've been, we've been working on this program now since the fall, and Jose and Melissa have been very actively involved in doing a very comprehensive evaluation of what equipment we have as a district that we own that would come under the qualifications of this program. So I'm going to turn it over to Jose, who will do, I think, maybe the heavy lifting with a formal presentation, and a PowerPoint slide presentation that we have that we could get queued up, and then certainly have some time for questions and answers when the presentation's done. So Jose, take it away.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you so much for sharing your time this evening. I'll try to be brief. The equipment breakdown insurance program and policy is a program that has been in place in the state of Iowa for roughly 10 years, and sort of a brief overview of who we are, specialty underwriters. We are the pioneers of equipment breakdown insurance, and we've been doing so since 1982. We currently are rated A- with the AM Best as proof of our financial stability. We received that rating on our very first opportunity and our very first chance. Sort of where we're at, we currently have 14 state contracts in place, including the state of Iowa, we've been working with the state of Iowa for now about 12 years. We currently write of the top 200 research universities in North America, 148 of them are our current clients. Included with that is the entire Ivy League, most of the Big Ten, including the state of Iowa. We also partner with many healthcare and regional healthcare facilities, including the University of Iowa Hospital in Iowa City. We also partner with Howard Hughes Medical Institute nationwide and internationally to provide maintenance for them, and on and on and on. Where do we work at currently in the state of Iowa with this product? With the, who uses it? We currently have 84 participants and participating districts of the UEN, which would be, speak more specifically to Cedar Rapids here. We currently have three districts, and we have another two that are doing the same due diligence that you guys are doing right here, and they are looking to try to get a program active for this fiscal year as well. That's a map, there'll be a quiz on that at the end, so. What we've done so far, as Steve mentioned, we have been at work with this since the fall, and so we've met with him several times, we met with the staff here at the school district, we've met with the department heads individually, and we've also met with them collectively to explain the program, to see how each of their departments would be impacted by it, and to answer any specific questions, because they all have specific needs and specific, you know, nuances to their own departments, and so we've met with those and done that so far. We've provided a proposal, as you've had a chance to review. We've also sat down with the business office and looked at with each department on what would be the best way, if this were to be met with an approval, what would be the best way to proceed, so that the school district could receive the highest and the maximum usage available. What we're prepared to do is, we're prepared to continue with the ongoing meetings with the departments, and we would set up a way where they would start submitting sample claims, for lack of a better term, and they could submit these in so that they could see exactly how the process would work, and how everything would flow before the policy would actually start and would be effective, that way that when the policy does start, everyone's on board, everyone's ready to go with the correct process and the procedures right away from day one. Everyone wants to know why. How does it make, why does it make sense for the district in regards to this? The district has selected 57 different categories that represents thousands of pieces of equipment in your district that are going to need to be repaired or replaced sometime this year. There's, I've given a brief example regarding IT equipment, but IT only, this only handles six of those 57 different categories. This handles everything from food prep equipment to the security equipment that you see in this building, to the IT equipment that's located back in the video room in regards to this. This is truly the only program of its kind, and the only policy of its kind, that is comprehensive in the way that it helps school districts address their needs in regards to that. And to that point, I'd like to stress that there's actually, not to get too in-depth and to redeem the time, there's actually three ways that the district uses this policy in regards to this. One way would be is if they needed to call in a vendor. An oven went down, they need to call in a vendor to come and do that, they would call the vendor, everything would work exactly as it would normally, the only difference is specialty underwriters would reimburse the school district 100% for the parts and labor that they had to pay out to the vendor. It would be a 100% reimbursement. The other option would be, is if the maintenance staff, or the IT staff, or one of the departments here at the district said, we can do that work. Specialty underwriters would then reimburse the district 100% for the parts used to do the work, but then we would also reimburse the district $55 an hour for that service person to perform that work. So whether it was a person in the maintenance staff, in the buildings and grounds, in the custodial, in IT, et cetera, et cetera, whoever it was that did that, replace the keyboard, replace the mouse, replace the monitor, replace the thermostat, replace the camera, all of these different things, we would reimburse the school district at the rate of $55 an hour for their time. That would then come back into the school district, we don't send them a direct check from us, that comes back to the school district as a miscellaneous income into the general fund. The third way is if there's items that it does not make any sense to repair. If you have a VCR, it's probably not going to make that much sense to repair if you still have a couple of those around. At that point, what we would do is we would look at and work with the school district, this is not an equipment replacement policy, it is a break-fix policy, but we do understand that if the fixing of it exceeds the replacement of it, we can come up, and a real-life example of what's happened this year, we had a school district where they had some projectors that went out, the fixing of the projectors was going to cost in the neighborhood of $600, the replacement of the projectors was going to cost $500, we issued them a check for $495 for each projector. We can do that, we cannot buy a new piece of equipment, but we can reimburse right up to that cost in regards to that. So those are the three primary ways that the district can see as far as the usage. The example that I've provided is a real-life example, these are, these are real-life things, these are how many devices that your staff has identified in these six categories, the 11,156 devices in regards to that. If one-third of them have a fail, you can see how the numbers, and again, this only represents six of the 57 different categories that the district has chosen and they have selected in regards to that. If, if your equipment does not break, that's always the question, too. What if our equipment runs great? What we've provided is, we provide a renewal credit that comes to the district, and it's set at 65%. So if for some reason your usage does not exceed 65%, then at that point, what we would do is we would reimburse back to the school 50% of everything that is less than 65%. This looks like an insurance endorsement document, because that is actually what it is, and so we can provide examples to that if you would like them more, but we wanted to provide the exact document in regards to that, because this is an actual insurance policy in regards to that. So we would share with the district back to that, and reimburse back to the district anything that was less than 65%. The final quote proposal, you've received this in your packet as well, and so we can answer any questions in regards to that. I do want to point out, this is the terms and coverage page, there's a couple of things on here, the $55 an hour... and coverage page, there's a couple of things on here, the $55 an hour in regards to that, but I also want to do, is to point out that this handles pretty much anything that is electric or electronic in nature. And when you start thinking of everything that's electronic, when you start thinking even in your home or in your office, everything that is electric or electronic, then you start getting the full scope of exactly how many thousands of pieces of equipment that we are dealing with in regards to here. This is the checklist that the district did fill out in regards to all the different categories that they would be looking at and potentially putting under this policy. There are some exclusions. Anything that is not electronic in nature, we cannot help with. We do work very closely with the IT departments when it comes to software, because we understand there's proprietary, and there are copyrights in regards to that, and we do not infringe upon that, and we work very closely with them to make sure that those lines are delineated and, and nothing is taken beyond where it should in regards to that. Do you have any questions? I know that's really fast.
I think we probably do. Any questions or comments from Alan?
Very good that we've looked into this. This is outside-the-box moment. I understand these are some nuances. We invested a lot of money in smart boards, and of all the things that could go wrong, I could see the next five years, that could become a problem for the district to try to keep those maintained, because really, it's not the upfront cost, it's always the maintenance costs. So the question is, is we have, I don't know how many smart boards, let's say we have 1,000 smart boards.
1,000, too.
Yeah, there you go. I was just guessing 1,000, but we have a lot of them. Are those covered under the same plan you just discussed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the other one that I think that we use a ton of, and I know we're trying to get a better handle on this, I know Lori's been working on this, is the printers. We have a ton of printers, and one time we had printers scattered everywhere and anywhere, and those are also the things you mentioned are covered.
You have 750 of them listed.
Okay.
If I could, just to speak to that, one of the things that this policy does, too, is it helps sort of corral where all of that stuff is, where maybe someone had purchased something, or someone got something and we didn't know about it, or somehow somebody was aware of it, but then everyone wasn't aware of it. It helps sort of corral where all of the equipment is, and it actually provides back to the district, and we provide back in reporting to the district, what pieces are failing, what, what types of pieces are breaking down. And this is so that the district then can make really hard evidence decisions based upon the fact of, if we look at it and we say, "We have this X model of printer at every school, and at every school it's working well except for at least two," well at that point, maybe it's time for us to work with the vendor, and we will pay for the vendor to come in and do some training. Maybe there's something wrong with, you know, how it's set up, or maybe there's something wrong with the temperature of where it's at, or the humidity, or different things like that. But we can provide that real hard data. Instead of it being, "I think that thing's always broken," we can provide the data back to the district so they can make an informed decision.
Their comments. Yes, Ann?
Could, could you explain that, that 65% thing again?
Yes.
I didn't quite get it. The 50% of something up to 65%.
(laughing)
I'm pretty good with math, but I couldn't follow that.
Okay.
Could you try that again, please?
All right. All right. What we have is, it's a 65%, it is a renewal credit. So if, let's use, for example purposes, let's say that the district's usage came in at 50%. At 50%, then we would split with the district the 15% of excess that's below the 65%.
So theoretically, if our, if our premium was $1,000, and we only used $500, then that other $150, we would get a $75 credit towards our next year's policy.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And if we didn't renew, we wouldn't get a credit?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you.
John? You look perplexed.
I am perplexed. So this, this all fits into the, the budget plan. There are benefits to the budget, which I guess is the part I'm most curious about. I get the repair and all those things, so how's, how is this helping us?
The budget is, is aided, because this is a very unique product. It is a toward insurance product. Unique, one of its, is one of a kind, that is accepted by the Iowa State Insurance Commissioner, and allowed for school districts in Iowa to levy a tax in the management fund to pay the premium, which is just under $800,000, and to receive reimbursements for all qualifying equipment that may break down during the policy period. And those dollars that we are reimbursed, as Jose had talked about, go into the general fund as miscellaneous income. So that's, that is the, the movement of resources. We're levying in the management fund, and we're driving revenues in the general fund. Now, 10 years ago, we probably wouldn't have considered this. Five years ago, probably not either. But our unspent balance today is going to be in that 2% range at the end of fiscal 15. So I would be remiss as a CFO if I didn't bring this to the board's attention for consideration. And with that, I'll tell you, we've had numerous meetings. We've gone to Iowa City to pick the brains of the folks down there to make sure that the model that they have is, is the model that we think we can deploy here. We've already, we are ready. We've got meetings set up, providing board support of this plan, to hit the ground running, and to make sure that we get as much as we can out of that premium, and exceed the 65%, and get every dollar that we can back to the general fund. We've got a, we're working on a budget adjustment package. I've talked about this at several board meetings. I'll be talking about it again tonight. But a significant part of that budget adjustment package includes this revenue stream of about a half a million dollars, give or take. We believe we can do better than that, but it's, it's going to be the first year. We don't know for sure. What happens is, the school district, our, our programs, how we repair equipment, whether it's IT, or whether it's food nutrition, or whether it's buildings and grounds, or whether it's something that happened in an elementary building, will happen exactly as it's happening now. The difference is going to be that we're going to be calling information from Lori Bruzek and her staff, from Rob Kleinsmith and his staff, from Matt Dunbar, from our building principal secretaries, to get that data in, shoot it over to SU, and get those reimbursement dollars flowing back into the general fund. That's how this is set up to work. And again, it is your consideration. It's brought to your attention, and so I, I'll stop there.
Gary?
A couple of more questions, but I, I think at least one was covered. The, the fact that the renewal, an issue with your, your presentation, you said you'd be cutting a check for, if we didn't exceed the 65%, and it, it really isn't, it's on the, it's on a credit given to the next year's premium. So in a sense, there's a, a catch there to continue with this service from year after year. I'm, one of my concerns would be on your example, you said a third, and this was, I know just an example, but I guess I'd like to hear from Lori on a, a third of the computers technology breaking down. That seems to me pretty high, that we would have that much equipment repair, at least on the computer end. I don't know about the servers and some of the other things.
I think you're right, that, that may be high, just, if you're looking just at computer numbers, the number of repairs that we go to do as to whether they're break-fix or whether it's user assistance or software reinstallation. But we do have a lot of projectors and whiteboards and computers, and over time, they, they do add up the repair cost on those.
And the other was suggested from our last audit, district audit committee, in a discussion that this may be a way of helping with replacement of, of, or upgrading on technology, but what I'm hearing is it's not, can't be used as replacement. So say we have a, a five or six-year-old computer, and it, and a board goes down, and the board's a, a memory board, or whatever, those, what's ever inside those magic boxes, it's a $100 part, and so it's not a replacement. So we're replacing, we're repairing a five- or six-year-old computer that would be maybe near our, our rotation cycle, and upgrading in technology. So we're really not gaining, we're not gaining a, an increase on the, as far as upgrading on the technology.
You would get an allowance towards the purchase of a new piece of equipment if you cash it out, sorry, hi. You would get an allowance towards the purchase of a new piece of equipment. You wouldn't get a replacement value of it, but you would get some funds towards the purchase of a new piece of equipment if you decide not to fix it and decide to replace it. And that is your option. You still have the, the option to fix, or if you want to buy a new one, you can cash it out and get the depreciated value.
And so we would be giving some kind of a
Allowance.
Allowance for
Yes.
Based on the, the age of the computer, probably?
That is correct.
Or the piece of equipment?
Yes.
Well, the, you know, basically what we, if we didn't buy the insurance, if we did not have this, we would be self-insuring, basically, ourselves. We would be covering these, these repairs. And the way I understand it, the advantage of doing this is, we, we pay for those repairs out of the management fund, would be using this program, whereas not out of the general fund. But at a pretty hefty, from my opinion, a pretty hefty percentage of, of fees, even if we were at the 65% level reimbursement. I mean, obviously, they're not, we're never going to get, I wouldn't think we would reach the whole premium, otherwise the company wouldn't be in business if they continue to, continue to pay at the premium level or beyond.
Well, we, we are not a non-for-profit organization, that is true. However, every year, we do have schools that exceed the 100% premium level. That is one of the advantages to it, is if it exceeds the 100% premium level, you don't pay a dime more to do that. And if you were self-insuring, obviously, you would still be paying out of pocket in regards to that. Part of the reason why we can do that is because we're spreading the risk over, over 80 different school districts, instead of just one district in regards to that.
Relatively new to, to this area. Steve, I see Iowa City activated their program in 2010. They would have a couple of years of experience. Do you have any idea of what their experience has been?
Their experience was slow, slow to start. They, I don't think they took it as seriously as they should have. They had a couple of years where they did a little tripping and stumbling, and then they realized that they needed to focus more attention on a successful deployment. And they have a very successful deployment today. Lots of lessons learned. We went down there and learned a lot of those lessons. We know what we don't want to do when it comes to deployment. And we, you know, there, there is a, far more folks that are going to be involved with this than just myself. I'm speaking on behalf of those who have attended our meetings to date, and those who will continue attending as we move towards the deployment of this. Our, our goal is to send test data to SU, specialty underwriters, to find out whether or not what we're sending them is being received appropriately, if it has the right language, the right descriptions. And if we have to modify what we're saying that we're sending them, we'll make modifications. But we want to be able to receive back as much of those refund dollars for equipment that breaks, that breaks down as possible. And so, you know, in regards to property tax, and I guess I'm sort of taking a little wind out of the, the presentation sails on the budget, but our budget levy rate, and I do apologize for giving you the wrong levy rate in the board action. Our proposal is to leave the levy rate unchanged in fiscal 15, and further, we, we believe, I'll speak from a CFO's perspective, in fiscal 16, we will not budget levy rate up at all in 16 as well. Our levy rate is going to be locked in in 15 and 16, regardless of what the outcome of our Pebble election may be, and hopefully, it'll be a, a supportive of election, and we'll be able to, to hold on to that tax levy rate. So we, we will hold the line on that property tax levy rate, in spite of the fact that we've got this $800,000 premium that we would be paying for from a local property tax.
Let me ask a clarifying question, if I can. So you said that Iowa City tripped and stumbled along the way. What, can you, what does that mean? They didn't turn in claims? They weren't diligent about the information they sent in? So they weren't taking advantage of the program?
Not everybody was on board.
Okay.
And departments that were involved didn't take it as seriously initially as they should have. And those, those things changed as, as the program matured, and people realized what effort was required in order to make it a successful program. And so it's all about the front-end investment of time to create a model for deployment, and getting everybody on board up front, months before the actual date of July the 1st, which is when this would begin.
And so who's going to monitor this continued deployment? Because I know in other initiatives across our district, we're not always good at doing that.
We have a job description written, and provided board support of this action tonight, it's going to hit the streets. We're going to bring in a, a secretary, a support secretary, who will be dedicated full-time to monitor and to receive and to be trained on how to administer this program. I will be looking at all those reports going through, and I want to make sure that we get everything that we can. We have to dedicate, this half-a-million dollars approximately is net, when we invest in a support person to provide the oversight of the program.
Okay, one last question. Do, do we know what we're spending on repairs and, and breakdown of equipment at this point in time, on an annual basis?
That's a great question. I can't respond to that. I don't, no.
I remember seeing that in the, is that general fund for repairs?
No, that's, that's the building repairs. In the Pebble account, we set aside money for, for building repairs.
That's right.
Yeah. I think that's what you're thinking of. I don't know that we've ever seen reports on like how much IT repair costs, or how much kitchen equipment repair.
John, I'm sorry, Ann. John?
Does this duplicate other contracts that we already have? I know the University of Iowa has brought up here, but we have individual contracts already for copy machines, for instance, and other equipment. So are we double-dipping on some of these things, then?
We're, we are paying per click on copy machines. We don't own the copy machine, and copy machines will all be included in this program. Now, I, I'm sure Lori could speak very well on this, and I'll, if I, if I'm not correct on this, I'm sure you'll, you'll straighten me out. But there, there, when we purchase technology, a lot of it's already bundled with a, a certain warranty, just a baseline warranty of, for example, a year. Whether you want it or not, you're going to get a year li, a year warranty, and you pay for that. It's embodied in the unit cost of what you're purchasing. So that doesn't change, because it isn't a choice necessarily for the, for the purchaser to make when they're buying the technology. So we'll use those warranties as they are in the technology that we buy. But the technology that goes beyond warranty needs to be repaired. And Lori's budget in the ISL, or the general fund, non-categorical, or salary resources, will be used to pay for those repairs. That will continue on, as it always has. The difference is that we have a premium from the management fund that allows us to record this information and to receive a reimbursement by the hour, by the part, for all of those repairs that take place, to create this general fund revenue stream that we don't currently have. So.
Dave, did you have some comments or questions?
Just one comment. This is not our first time that we've looked at this issue. It is the first time we've brought it to the board for consideration, and the, the reason is our continued difficult position with state finance, and we continue, in my opinion, to be underfunded and undercommitted by the state, for example, not following state statute and setting up supplemental state waiting for the 14, 15 school year within the first 30 days of the session. We're looking at, and we're turning over stones that we wouldn't do. And as Steve said, 10 years, 5 years, and I wouldn't turn this stone over a year ago, but I am turning it over now because of our position, and if we, you know, this is like any other insurance product. And if we, you know, this is like any other insurance product. If we really use the product, we can come out okay on it. If we don't do it diligently, we won't come out so well. And that's the actuarial basis from which the company operates, in order to make that estimate when they take on a new client, as to where we're going to be. I think Steve has diligently looked at it over at least two years that I've been involved, knowing the product is out there. So I wanted to be candid with the board. It is an insurance product. There is no guarantee, other than the target, the 65% and the sharing. And if we do our job, we should exceed that.
Other final comments? Keith?
The repairs now come out of the general fund, right? So that would not change. If there is a repair, you get reimbursed for it, so it'd come out of the general fund. So the repairs that are made would be self-canceling, right?
I'm not sure what you mean by self-cancel.
I'm saying if I have a computer that needs $1,000 worth of repair, I get a check for $1,000, repair it, that cancels itself out, right?
The $1,000, the $1,000 for the computer repair would be paid for by Lori Bruzak's technology budget, if Lori Bruzak believed that the $1,000 investment in that computer was warranted, to continue the life of that computer.
Right.
And if specialty underwriters believed that that was a worthwhile investment too. So presuming that all of those are true, the difference is that we receive a $1,000 check from specialty underwriters, that's receded into our general fund as miscellaneous income. Lori still pays, out of the technology budget, the $1,000 repair bill, and the money, the $1,000 that comes into the general fund miscellaneous income, is going into the general fund in a general location that provides that authorized revenue stream that takes the pressure off of our budget.
That's where I stumbled, because if Lori repairs the $1,000 item, we get a check for $1,000 that cancels it out.
Like, why isn't going back to Lori's budget?
All right.
Right.
Here's the reason why.
No, I mean, whether it's Lori's budget or not, somewhere, just forget whether it's her budget, it's the school budget. You make a $1,000 repair, you get a $1,000 check, that one canceled out, right?
Yes.
So I have a little trouble with understanding where that benefits us. And when I look at the premium amount, I'm just rounding, $800,000 premium, $500,000 worth deal, it's $300,000 for $500,000. That's relatively high rates. And I understand equipment. I would want high rates too, if I was an insurer. But that's relatively high rates, one. And I understand it comes out of a different fund, but then when it comes in to the general fund, if we really make the repairs, and I hope we would, or we're just, you know, sliding down the hill here, you eventually got to replace it, where that enters in a cash flow to the district.
This is a financing vehicle, Director Westercamp. This is a financing vehicle that provides relief to the general fund. It's that simple. And, you know, without repeating what we've already said, I guess maybe I'll repeat. When our unspent balance is sitting at 10%, 15%, this was a conversation that didn't have to take place.
I know that.
But it does now, because it's an opportunity to pay for and receive a reimbursement for a equipment repair that provides relief to the general fund. It's that simple.
If I could just, I'm sorry. If I could just interject, one of the elements in regards to the $1,000 repair, that I'm not sure if you caught, I was going through pretty quick, is I don't know if your IT staff currently makes $55 an hour. If they don't, then we would be reimbursing them at a higher rate than what you're currently paying them in regards to that.
Well, that's another level of complexity. It's like, the mechanic in the shop doesn't make what they charge me, but there's all this other overhead that gets included in that, and profit. So, but it still comes down to, I'm not grasping where, if there's a $1,000 repair, you get a check for $1,000. That seems pretty simple, too, that we gained anything.
If an employee does a repair, you're going to get 100% of the parts. So let's say the repair costs $1,000 in parts. You're going to get $1,000 for the parts that were put into that piece of equipment, but then you're also going to get the time that your employee is doing that work, that you're not getting reimbursed for now. They're still doing it, regardless if you get the reimbursement or not. So you could be ahead in the fact that, if you have a vendor fix it, yes, it's $1,000 for $1,000, because your employee staff's not involved in it.
So the marginal gain there.
Yes, so, but if your employee is involved, you're going to get that time reimbursed for them, and the parts. So there is a gain.
Well, I can understand that one, but the part itself, which depends on the computer, you wouldn't be, you know, we buy it wholesale and retail, so you wouldn't be that, it's retail to retail, right? So it's only the employment, employee section.
The additional amount that you would get, we're going to reimburse you for the expense that you had for those parts, and then you're going to get the time that your employees spend that you weren't, you're not getting reimbursed for currently. And then if you do a cash out, you would get money towards the purchase of a new piece of equipment, which you wouldn't have anyway, and you'd still have that expenditure of buying that new piece of equipment. So you're still getting a gain.
Okay, John?
Just a couple, changing the direction here just a little bit. So as the district amps up, getting more tablets and things that we're doing in the hands of our students, will that, over the years, then up, just because we've got more equipment, up the rate on this policy, I'm assuming?
Oh, sorry. It may. It may. And the reason why I say it may, is because as we share the usage numbers back with Steve, as it gets ready for, if the board decides to move forward, and we move forward through this year, you'll see where every dime that you invested went. Every dime that you paid, every premium dime that you spent, you'll be able to see where that went, in regards to that. And so, if it comes back around, and it makes sense, and you come back and say, well, we've added another 400 tablets, or something like that, if it makes sense to roll that into the existing premium, at that point, that's a decision we can sit down and a discussion we can have.
Well, I just have to say that I appreciate the discussion. We are in a financial situation here, as a district that's come up for a few years now. We've been lobbying the legislature. They don't seem to get their hands around this, these different pots of money. I appreciate that there's this mechanism, that at least we have a way to get some money flowing back into the general fund, and still keep the levy at the same rate, which seems critical to our public, and to our staff and others. So I appreciate this discussion, at least in consideration.
Gary?
Well, and I think Dave had it, Dr. Benson had it the nail on the head with. It's because of not adequate funding. As I look at the list of the schools that either currently are using this, or are moving to it, or I'm sure are all facing those financial challenges, because the state has not adequately funded the educational programs. But John, the last comment, what this does is that even though we're not increasing the rate, I think we also have to, the truth is that we are taking local taxpayers' money out of the management fund, whether we, there has to be, maybe not an increase in the rate, but it's offset by not reducing the rate. We're still levying against that management fund. It's a shift from state funding to, back to the local property taxes. And again, at a pretty sizable rate of interest, as Keith pointed out. It's not fair, it's not right that we're put into this situation. I have a difficulty on the fiscal responsibility, just of the percentage of what it's cost for us to move those funds. And I appreciate the work, and I appreciate what Steve has done, I appreciate the presentation, but from my standpoint, I just have trouble accepting them.
Ann?
Yeah, I have a few questions yet that haven't run up. So back to the current cost of repairs, is there, is there any kind of a work order system that would actually be able to pull? I mean, it's not something I'm expecting you to just pop off the top of your head, but do we even have the data to know how much we're spending on repairing these? I added them up, over 17,000 items. Do we know what those cost?
We're going, we're going to collect data from our work order system. Our Buildings and Grounds Department uses a work order system. We'll take that data and pull it into a spreadsheet with the appropriate fields filled out. Lori Bruzak, Vicki Ginkinger, and the Technology Department have their wheel invented. It's not the work order system that Buildings and Grounds uses. They have their own system. We'll pull their data in, and we're going to marry those two bodies of information, along with our food nutrition, who do, they do use the work order system. And then we're going to have a lot of the less formal ways of getting information, it'll be the phone calls from a building secretary, or email saying, this is broke down, I heard about specialty underwriters. We're going to collect all that information and send it on to
I'm talking about looking back. Do we know for fiscal 13 or fiscal 14, what these repairs are costing us?
We certainly can pull that information together. $800,000 is a premium that allows for a profit, clearly.
Right.
And specialty underwriters has been in this business for a long time, and they've written these programs for other K-12s, as well as larger organizations. And they're sizing us at $800,000, based upon their evaluation of all the equipment that is within the program that's eligible, that could break down. It's a blanket, it's a blanket policy. And their risk is that we're going to really be good at this, and we're going to have a bad year, and we're going to be collecting more than $800,000. Our risk is that we're not, and we don't do as good of a job, or we have everything that doesn't break. But that sweet spot in between $500,000 and $800,000 is the range in which we would expect an organization of our size to expend monies to repair equipment, or have it replaced.
Okay.
So
Yeah, that's good. Are some of these, or, that's another question for you, Steve. We have an asset management program that got put in place a few years ago, and I was wondering if, if you'd have any idea of how many percentage of these items are in that program, and if these repair costs would be tracked, and somehow connected to the asset management program?
Well, I know that Lori Bruzak, I've mentioned your name many times, Lori, I'm sorry for putting you on the spot, has a very nice system that records the history of repairs.
Oh, I thought we bought an AssetWorks Asset Management. I was talking about that one.
We do.
Okay.
We do. And we have, we have had the remaining audit comment removed with the deployment of our AssetWorks Fixed Asset Management System. Full appraisal of all that we own, that's classified as movable equipment, and tags placed, and recorded, and all the data in our system. So we have our hands around what we own. Much of that is not eligible, because it's not electronic. A table, a chair, those kinds of things aren't even going to be in this kind of a program. I don't know if anyone does a better job of recording the history of repairs on equipment than our IT department would, under the circumstances. And, you know, I think that Jose and Melissa utilized the information that we were able to give to them in our Fixed Asset Management System, in our IT system of collection of all of our equipment, IT equipment, in order for them to understand the size and scope of the job of giving this quote, along with meetings with all of our department representatives.
All right, thanks. Two more questions. Do you know how much Iowa City's premium is, and how much percentage? I mean, you said they were doing better now, or they're doing well? Do you have any idea what percentage they've recovered?
They're
Or what they're on track for, for this year?
They're pro-rated about to what I would expect. They're $11,000, we're $16,000. I think their premium was in the $600,000 range, with about $350,000 or greater that they expect to be receiving in their program. So they're of like size, or they're
Proportional.
Proportionately about right, about where we would expect them to be.
And then the premium, the quote, that's just for one year?
For one year.
And is there any, I didn't see anything in there about, say, capping, like, not to exceed 3% each year? Or, I mean, do we have any idea, future years, what it would be? Or, I mean, if we sign up, and then next year, it's going to be 1.2 million? Or, that's kind of what I wanted to know, too.
We are not allowed to offer more than one-year policies with this particular policy that was put in place by the Insurance Commission here at the State of Iowa.
Okay.
So, I, so, I mean, based upon usage, I couldn't tell you whether it'd be three. I mean, if you ran at 150% loss ratio, then maybe we're back talking about something. If you ran at something less than that, you know, or whatever, we'd have to sit down and see in regards to that. Our goal is to get you at a stabilized premium level. And as I mentioned, we've been doing this for 12 years in the state of Iowa. We feel like we have a pretty good idea about where schools run, and what they can look at in regards to that. And so, our goal is so that you don't have big dips up or down in, from year to year to year.
Final questions or comments? Keith?
If this were to be tabled for a meeting, and give you an opportunity to come back with what our actual costs of repairs are, and so on, would that be problematic, per se? And then maybe get another school or district or two, I mean, if there's however many, that we could talk to and get, this 84 is, that's the right number, I don't remember, but, and find out how well it's really working with them. Maybe you can provide us, as the agents, you know, what their premiums are, what they bend, some history. Because my experience with insurance is, is if you use it, you pay more premium, you know, so, pretty counter to what I've experienced.
First of all, we could table it. You know, the certified budget that is before you tonight incorporates the revenue from the management fund to provide for the premium payment in fiscal 15. And if the worst would come to fruition, and at the next board meeting, we bring it back up, and the board says no, then we're going to have a bigger balance in our management fund as a result of that. We would reduce the management fund levy in subsequent period to neutralize the effect. We can bring more information back to the board. On the 28th of April, we'll talk more about this. We don't have to take action on this one tonight, if that's the wishes of the board.
I would move to table to the 28th.
A second.
This is a, what?
There's no discussion, go ahead.
Yeah. The roll call action?
Director Ann Halt?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Camp?
Aye.
Director Losenthal?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye. So the intent of tabling this item is for you to bring additional information back to the board regarding some idea of cost of repair that we've paid for in the past, and what other, and we'd like some more information on other district experiences.
Let's repeat to Steve.
Okay.
Yep.
We thank you for your time.
Mm-hmm.
Steve, do you just want to stay up there for the next item?
Just keep on going.
Yep, so this is for the budget amendment resolution.
I'm not sure if we've, is this the fiscal 15 certified budget?
No, this is 13, 14 budget amendment.
Okay. The fiscal 14 budget amendment, you'll see in the pertinent fact sheet, there are three columns there. Again, the far-right-hand column is based upon what we expect, and the four functionaries to expand, and the center And the center column gives us a little wiggle room. That's the amount that's actually been amended to and we've published. You've had the public hearing and I would recommend that you approve the budget amendment.
Questions or comments? If not, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the fiscal year 2013, fourteen budget amendment. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay? And I'll again leave it with you to talk about fourteen certified budget.
Okay, very good. All right. You're going to see a lot of slides you've seen before here in the last several months here. So, I do apologize in advance for what would probably be a bit of a repeat here, but here we go. The certified budget process is the one we're focusing on tonight. And again, our line item budget is a work in progress. And we'll be bringing the line item budget to you at a later date, typically the 30th of June is our timeframe for the line item budget. So, we've had conversations on the 24th of February, the 10th of March, and again tonight for certification. And the 15th tomorrow is the deadline. So, we'll be sending that budget to the Department of Management by the deadline tomorrow.
Don't get it lost in the taxes.
Yes, don't want to lose that. Don't want to lose it at all. So, our preliminary total district revenues, you see the number there, 264 million. Our total district expenditure is of 260 million dollars. The recommendation is for a levy rate of 1547881. It's exactly the same levy rate as what we currently have in fiscal fourteen. There is a savings to all commercial industrial property taxpayers because of the file 295 that was brought into law that reduces the assessed value to a new taxable value of 95% of assessed value. So, it's reducing the amount subject to property taxation for the industrial and the commercial property classes. There is, though, a state required rollback increase on all residential property of 3%. So, even with the levy rate being the same, you're seeing the effect of this rollback on residential property class. So, the fundamentals is said at our last board meeting. We've got a $6 million general fund budget adjustment that are assumed in our forecast for our spending authority that you'll see in just a moment here. That is the assumption. We will continue to pursue all authorized revenue sources and to reduce expenditures where we can to provide that long-term sustainability to the general fund budget. And we have in the budget maintaining that cash reserve levy at 13.7 million dollars. So, again, there are three key elements of our budget adjustments. We thankfully have this great news of our Teacher Leadership and Compensation Award, a $5 million grant. And there's a sizable amount of existing costs that we are going to be shifting over to the Teacher Leadership Grant that are a part of our budget adjustment package. The proposed Equipment Repair Insurance Program is one of those key pieces. And then our targeted spending reductions primarily in our middle school programs that you've heard about. So, at any rate, the... I'm going to grab a drink of water here. Excuse me. We, I believe the goal is to come back before the Board of Education on the 28th and talk to you about the specifics of what that budget adjustment package is all about. So, there'll be more information at our next board meeting on that. Again, this is the unspent balance in gold, the spending authority reserve trend. And in the green is essentially cash showing where we're going to be at at the end of fiscal fifteen with the implementation of a $6 million budget adjustment package. It stabilizes our spending authority at 2%. And because of a 13.7 million dollar cash reserve levy, it is going to generate a significant increase in our fund balance, our cash balance. Unfortunately, cash balance in the general fund doesn't always come with spending authority attached. So, you'll see Moody's loves a fund balance improving to 8%. But our spending authority limits us and limits our abilities and forces us to look at spending adjustments in order to maintain that long-term sustainability. So, next steps, we will keep watching what's going on in the State House. And we will continue to refine and bring to you a general fund budget adjustment package at the next board meeting. And we'll keep on working on that line item budget and bring to you that final line item budget in June of this year. So, I'm happy to answer questions that you may have.
Questions or comments, Alan?
What's our, Steve, you mean, I know it's off the top of your head. What's our net difference in tax revenue based on the rollback of the 5% on the commercial and the increase of 3% on residential? Because people ask me that question, what was the net impact? You know, we held the line. Is it a wash? Is it actually going to increase because the residential is greater than the commercial overall on the assessed value? I mean, what's the break?
Well, when we hold our levy rate the same and commercial industrial property has, is 95% of its value taxed, we as a district will see a decline in revenue as a result of that. With our 3% increase in the rollback percentage applicable to local property tax, we're going to see the reverse happen in the residential property class. Do they wash between the three? Well, I'm not sure whether they wash between the three. But the final piece to understand, Alan, is that the school finance formula will limit the amount of local property tax revenue that we bring into the school system. With a few exceptions, the cash reserve levy would be one of those. But we are holding that line on that levy rate. And, well, hopefully I've answered your question.
Yeah, I'd be interested sometime to know what that figure is, if you can come up with that. Because I know we know the assessed value for those two pieces and we could get within five figures or something, it may be six. But it'd be nice to know what that differential is. Because I think in the future, if someone says, "Are we going to raise the levy next year because the rollback goes back further with the commercial and the other?" You know, we've got to kind of know what's happening with that. I know we have a limitation on that with the state, but it would be nice to know what the total, the net is.
Okay, other comments or questions?
Well, another point to that, though, is that the assessments aren't necessarily level. That's kind of with the assumption they are and they're not. And the city assessor is doing annual adjustments to residential values. And that trend has been upward. So, I just throw that in there that there's two factors going at the same time.
And our property tax base has grown by about 2% from a year ago. We have seen an increase overall.
Right, so you, that's all I'm saying, so...
So, the base has gone up, the industrial's gone down, the residential's...
Not industrial.
Sorry, the commercial's gone down, the residential's gone up a little bit.
Right.
And there's more property that's taxable now than there was a year ago because of economic development. These, this is the incremental change over time.
Right.
Gary?
Steve, do we, on the surplus in the cash reserve money and the management, you said possibly we could have a surplus in the management fund. Do we collect interest on those, on those surpluses?
We do, you know, it's amazing. If you go back in time about five years ago, when we were earning 4% on our savings, we were driving a million dollars a year in general fund spending authority just from interest on the money we had in the bank. And you know, that's about $200,000 today. We're getting 15 basis points on our investments. That's 15 one-hundredths of 1%. So, it is, that is another story about why the unspent balance is in the position that it's in because interest rate revenues have sharply declined.
Declined, yeah.
Okay, other comments or questions? If not, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the proposed district levy rate for fiscal year 2014 and 15 of 15.47881. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Okay, I'll turn this over to Dr. Benson and Laurel Day to talk about policy manual review and revisions.
Thank you. We have a number of policies, procedures, and regulations that we've brought to you for your consideration this evening. Most of them reflect changes to federal, state law, district, current district practices. They've all been reviewed by the Policy Review Committee, the Superintendent's Cabinet, and legal counsel where needed. We're here to answer questions if you have any.
Questions or comments?
So, I know that I will get questions about the physical education adjustments. Is there a practical, you know, way of explaining this? Based on this, how will this change physical education for students in the high schools or middle schools especially?
We'll turn this over to Carla for her comments.
It won't necessarily change it. It will make us more compliant with state law is what it will do. On our site visit, we were cited for noncompliance with PE waivers. We've cleaned that up and rewritten the policy to reflect that, making it clear so that there's no questions about who can get a waiver and what the process for that is.
Great, thanks.
Other questions or comments? Keith?
I have a question on rental rates and so on that are there. I just want a point of clarification on groups like AEAs, Iowa Association, ISCEA, and so on. What category, maybe we can see an example? So, I would think that those, I think you have three categories there.
Yes.
And I'm not rolling through quick enough to get it right now. But at any rate, maybe we can give some examples or clarification on what those are.
Are you wanting specifically to know tonight how those groups would be charged?
Well, yeah.
What's an example of them, one, two, and three?
Okay, maybe Steve could answer those questions related to specific groups, group one, two, and three.
Are you asking that there's some examples in the policy?
Yeah, that there'd be an example or, I'm just asking the question. It would seem to me that those groups would not be charged since they're a part of our nation. We belong to and we pay the fees, ultimately comes back to us. I'm just asking the question of how those groups would be treated.
Do you have a microphone?
Group one, there's no charge. Yeah, we have a lot of group one usage and group one is defined in board policy. And group two is defined, group three is defined.
Right.
And so, we don't. We avoid charging for group one with the exception, if we have a custodian or we have any other related kinds of unique fees that we're paying that is connected to the use of the facility, we would, you know, we would charge for that. For example, an elementary building on a Saturday, when a custodian would typically not be present. You know, in that kind of a situation, we would, we would charge for the custodian, but we wouldn't charge for the use of the building.
I think he's asking if those groups that he mentioned qualify under that first category of no charge.
And that's their group two, activities of educational-related group, tax-supported educational institutions conducting education or recreational programs, public information organizations, governmental agencies, neighborhood recreational activities. Those are all examples of group two, which is a fee that recovers our out-of-pocket. So, if the Iowa Association of School Boards came in and wanted to do a regional meeting and required setup and required teardown, we would charge them for the out-of-pocket costs that we have to host their meeting. But they would not be charged a rental fee as such. So, we distinguish between basically our internal uses, uses that are affiliated in pursuit of educational outcomes in some way, and then commercial entities.
Then answer your question, Keith.
Yeah, it is, it's, yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Gary?
I'm trying to find it, a clarification of transportation, transportation of students in private vehicles.
Oh, yeah.
We're saying, what are we saying in this?
So, Steve, would you like to address that one? We did work with legal counsel specifically on this. Mary Ellen?
What we are saying in this item is that in the past, it has been, part of this regulation has indicated that transportation by students for other students was acceptable and that the decisions about that transportation would be made at the school level. Basically, what we're saying in this new regulation is that transportation to and from activities and practices is the responsibility of the student and the family. We don't want to be in the business of saying who can transport another student at the building. So, basically, the difference is here that it's really up to the parents to determine who can transport their student, it's not up to the school district. And that's if a child is going to be participating in an activity, that that would be the parent's responsibility.
I know on the athletic side in particular, from personal and past experience, that we've had, we've had practice and game competitions off-site, particularly when we're in the metro area. And some of the teams there, the students provide their own transportation to get there. My question is, how do we, how are the parents made aware? How will we make the parents aware that the responsibility will lie with them?
Interestingly enough, and I know Paul James is here this evening, the Activities Director at Washington High School. When we talked about this in Activities Council, the Activities Directors indicated that we were not currently carrying this out the way that it had previously been written, that what is actually happening is what the regulation says now, that it is, parents do determine how their students will be transported to and from activities. And that is not, has not been something that the school has been doing. So, how do we communicate that? We communicate it in a variety of ways. Of course, our policies, regulations, and procedures are on our website. We have a handbook that goes home at the beginning of each school year at all three of the high schools and each of our schools, actually. And we would, we would share that, we could share this regulation in there as well. I'm going to see, Paul, is there any other way? I mean, through coaches?
Mary Ellen, just from personal experience, the coaches are really good about communicating when a bus is available and when it's not. That's, or coaches, directors, that's kind of been my experience as a parent.
Yeah, I think that's accurate.
Yeah, coaches will have meetings with their parent groups, whatever, usually at the start of the season and that would be a way. We have, I think all the schools have kind of a kickoff night before the start of the fall sports, you know, and that can be mentioned. I know we're working on trying to get athletic handbooks on our websites and stuff so that people can see it there. But the handbooks that the principals create, I think is a real good way to do that.
Okay, John?
So, my question is, if this is important to us and we want to make sure that we know that the parents are aware of this, is there something that we should be making the parents sign for art and music and those sorts of activities? I know I'm signing waivers to do all kinds of things. So, you know, we have these, we can publicize them, but then a parent comes back and say, "I really didn't know about that." Well, you should have known about it. Well, here, you sign this. And I don't know legally if that's something or just for us to make sure that we're covered. But that's something that may be of value to us as a district to look at. I don't know.
Keith?
I have two questions. One is vehicle searches, that's in this policy. And I just want to be sure that this confirms what, that this has been checked by legal counsel.
Are you talking about search and seizure? Are you talking... Are you talking about the search and seizure regulation?
Yes, vehicle searches.
Yes.
So I just want to be sure that that's been checked, because I know that that one has caused some real problems around the country. And the other one is, on the 901.7, think over all those are, and I'm trying to find it again on my computer, I rolled past it, so I'll quit. But it says in there, CDL license, and a CDL license is, is a pretty high level of licensure. And, you know, most taxi cab drivers and so on, I believe only have a Class D chauffeur's license. And then that correlation between the teacher, if a teacher is driving on an event, if they should be licensed at a D or a CDL.
It says a driver's license or a CDL.
Or. It's one or the other.
The first bullet reads, must have a current valid and appropriate driver's license or commercial driver's license.
All right.
Go to 136.
Right.
And yes, the search and seizure...
There's the regular driver's license, Class D and a CDL. So I'm just, just pointing that out. I...
Well, a valid driver's license, any of those other categories are a valid driver's license, so.
Right, they are.
Yeah, they must have one of those or a CDL. It could be a regular license, a C license, or a D license.
You're saying everyone should have a CDL? Is that what you're...
What?
Are you saying that they should have?
No.
Okay.
I think a CDL is, is a commercial, commercial license for over 24,000 pound truck trailer, et cetera.
Right.
But there's also a D, that's all I'm saying.
Right, and a D is covered in that language.
All right, just checking.
John?
Since we're on the topic, I do always have a concern about students getting to these activities, and I know after visiting many schools and talking to parents, that we as a school district are buying taxis, rides, we're buying bus tickets from the city of Cedar Rapids. And as we're talking about this policy about making sure kids get to activities and practices, I think it's really incumbent upon us to have a conversation with the city of Cedar Rapids and transportation to try and get free bus rides for our students on city transportation. We brought this up a long time ago, the city of Des Moines and the Des Moines School District have had it for a long time. And I think that would benefit the city, and I think it will benefit our kids and families. Again, as we see increases in poverty, I know that there are parents, they're supposed to be doing this stuff, but in essence, we as a district are paying for a lot of these kids to get to these activities, and I think there's some benefit to the city and community as well to help in that.
John, I met about a month ago with the Transportation Department from the city, and one of the things, I do have quite a bit of data that I can share with you as far as the ridership of our students. We, students in the Cedar Rapids School District do make up quite a bit of the transit for the buses in the city of Cedar Rapids. They did reduce the rate just this year, just recently, for our students, which was good, and I will provide that information to you.
Terrific, thanks.
Good point, and Dave and I will put it on our agenda when we meet with city folks. Actually, I think we're meeting this month, so, good point. Alan?
Something came up, I know the Regional Center is a new item, and a lot of kids are being bused there, or they're being brought in with a taxi if there's only one or two kids. And I assume what John brought up there, some of the school districts have just said kids can't drive themselves to the Regional Center, absolutely not, so they have to provide transportation. And I don't know if this clearly states that, where the students, you know, because right now, if they go to a sporting event or practice, they can drive themselves, but can they drive themselves from the school building to the Regional Center? And there's pros and cons for both of those. Obviously, there's flexibility in the kids driving there, but something happened, so I guess, Dave, what is the current policy right now? Like, what do we do currently? Are we providing transportation in some fashion, or are the kids driving themselves?
It's an offer versus serve basis. We offer it, they don't have to take advantage of the service, and that's a choice, and that's in support of the Regional Center. But the basic overall tenor of the policy as recommended is the acknowledgement that it is a parental responsibility to transport students to and from school and school activities, and we're not going to obligate the school district resources or assume liability for doing that unless you're riding a bus that we are providing.
Got it, thank you.
Alan, currently, our students that need transportation to the Regional Center are going by taxi. And it's from the schools, we have taxi at each of the schools, and because of the small number, it was cheaper to do it that way than a bus.
Good job.
Anne?
Looking at this again, now that the academic question is brought up, I interpret this as, as practices and other school activities, and I don't really interpret this as academic for this particular regulation.
That's right, and that's why we're, we're doing that for the Regional Center. We're offering transportation.
No, right, but I don't see that the Regional Center is covered under this procedure.
No.
No, no.
Okay.
It's an academic program.
All right.
It's part of their credit, their credit school day.
Or if it needs to be covered someplace else, I don't know.
I don't know. We can look at that.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that I was interpreting this as activities and practices, and not academics.
Maybe the title should re-transportation of students in private vehicles with practices and activities, do you think that would make it more clear? Starting?
That would help, I think.
I think if that's the intent here, is it's generally non-academic.
There you go.
Non-directly, I mean, everything they do, they learn, right? But it's more the, the non-classroom setting type activities.
So co-curricular, maybe?
Maybe that's, rehearsals, practices, I mean, it's, or else the policy needs to also, I guess, either the policy's going to include the academics or not.
Yep.
And I just think it needs to, it's not a policy, it's a regulation. Sorry. Whatever it's defined as, it just needs to be clear what it's covering. That's all.
Do we, if we're transporting kids to the Regional Center, are we transporting them to other academic institutions such as Co., Mount Mercy, or, not currently, just to the Regional Center?
We currently are providing transportation for those expanding opportunities.
Okay.
I, not to be a stickler.
It's okay.
But I still have a problem with this, or commercial driver's license. If it's a valid license, it's a valid license, it doesn't matter the class, all right?
So you're saying you don't need to even say that.
So I'm just asking you to consider that, because you mentioned one, you should mention them all, you know?
We could just take off commercial, we could just take that off.
Just take it out, or a driver's license, CDL. That's what I'm having the problem with, that if you're saying appropriate driver's license, and then one thing that I did hear from a teacher that did wreck one of our vehicles, that the teacher told me I'd never driven that category of vehicle before that moment. So I don't know what we're doing there to be sure. I understand this is a private vehicle, but it was a private vehicle for an outside school event. Vehicle got in an accident, and the teacher just happened to mention I'd never driven a vehicle that size in my life. So are we, maybe this doesn't need to be in a policy, but I think somewhere we need to assure people that the people, you know, have a competency level, and that's why I look at the D or CDL.
Gary?
A clarification, we, we do provide transportation by taxi from the, for the Regional Center, from the high schools. Are the students required to use a taxi, or could they use their own vehicle? Could they drive themselves?
Yes, they can transport themselves.
So...
Or in other means of transportation.
And if they do, then they really are falling under this, then it's out there, it's under the understanding of the parents, that they're on their own liability, at their own risk and liability to the parents and not to the district.
I, yes, I would, I would interpret it in that way. And we did have legal counsel review this regulation, and they provided quite a bit of clarity on that. The Policy Review Committee looked at it a couple times, the Activities Council a couple different times, so.
I do understand the, the message here that you're bringing. I do think we probably should take this back and look at it again, and just make sure that we're clarifying whether this is related to co-curricular or academics, or what it really is, or what's, what's applicable to, and make that appropriate change. So we'll do that and bring that back.
I would also maybe with John's thought, is this an opportunity for a waiver from a parent? Tell me that again.
Wait, is this a chance for us to actually have a waiver that, that parents would have to sign off on?
Right. Like, on the, on the athletic side, parents have to sign a physical that gives permission for their student to participate in the physical, and that's sports. I don't know that there's a comparable document for other school activities.
Right. Okay, we'll take a look at that. Okay, good discussion, and I want to thank the Policy and Review Committee. I know that you spent a lot of time on this, and I appreciate that we're up to date with our policies, and appreciate the time that people spend and the consideration, so thank you for that work. We all do.
Do you vote, right now? No vote?
No vote. It's information. Another information...
Yeah, the policy will come back to you at the next board meeting.
Another information item is, we will be meeting in an exempt session to talk about strategy for negotiations. Just want to let everybody know that. And then I'm going to turn this over to a really wonderful video, which is our retiree recognition.
Cedar Rapids Community School District is proud to recognize the career contributions of our retiring employees. The efforts of these teachers, support staff members, and administrators have enriched the lives of thousands of students and have strengthened the district and community. I am pleased to congratulate them on their accomplished careers and to thank them for their dedicated years of service. Congratulations to Denise Warnock, Special Education Teacher at Coolidge Elementary. During her 35 years in the district, she also served at Madison, Pierce, Arthur, Wright, and Grantwood Elementarys.
I will miss the staff. They have been wonderful, very encouraging and supportive, and I've also missed, almost the students. The students work very hard, they struggle, but they don't give up. They have determination and perseverance, and then they can see their successes, and I enjoy seeing them, those smiles, just relaxing and spending some time for myself and my family.
Congratulations to Dr. Becky DeWald, Principal at Pierce Elementary, for her 30 years of service to the district.
Probably the best part, if anyone who works in elementary knows this, is those hugs every day. And just that feeling of, that you can make a difference in somebody's life and make sure that they leave here loving school. Well, I look forward to not having to get up quite so early every morning, and I have a bucket list of over 40 items that I'm going to accomplish once I retire. Going to improve my golf games at the top of the list.
The district is pleased to congratulate Lynette Richards, Guidance Counselor at Metro High School, on her 20-year career. Lynette also served at Johnson and Nixon Elementary Schools.
The day-to-day relationships with all the young people, learning from them every day, the great colleagues I've had to work with, helping kids discover their potential. When they had been always in situations where they didn't enjoy school, to have them come to Metro and discover how much they love learning and how successful they can be. I want to travel, there are things I want to learn, classes I want to take, more time with my grandkids, doing fun things with my husband, all the things I haven't had time to do, and keep doing all the things that I loved about Metro, that I'll just stay connected that way.
The district would like to recognize Cindy Donaldson, Associate Director of Special Services for the Cedar Rapids Schools, for her 10 years of service to the district.
I'm going to miss being a member of a school community. And I was thinking about this, and the fact that since I was five years old, I've had a first day of school. And so either as a student, or a parent, or an educator, I've been part of a school community. And so I, I'm going to miss the vibrancy and the, all the great things that the beginning of the school year brings. The best thing about my job are the people I work with. I have the opportunity to meet with students, and parents, staff, community members, and try to solve problems and just find the best outcomes for kids. I'm going to travel, I'm going to read, I'm going to sleep in, spend time with my children, grandchildren, siblings, and their families. I hope to take some classes. I really look forward to volunteering and having the time to volunteer, and then I'm really looking forward to being home on time for dinner.
The district is pleased to congratulate Gail Kelly on her 20-year career as a teacher librarian. Gail has served at Garfield, Wright, and Pierce Elementary Schools.
What I'm going to miss most about my job are kids and books. The best part of my job has been to share the love of literature with children, the idea of having the best books to read, and just to share that love, and I feel that that's something that I have done well, and I'm going to miss it very much. In retirement, I look forward most to three things: sleeping in, traveling, and reading something other than a children's book.
The district would like to congratulate Barb Long, Elementary Special Education Curriculum and Assessment Coach in the Department of Special Services. During her 19 years in the Cedar Rapids Schools, she also served at Van Buren and Wilson Elementary.
I think what I'll miss most about my job is working with other people in creating something new, whether it's a professional development, or a new initiative, or something about the excitement and synergy of coming up with the vision, making up the plan, putting it into action, and seeing it happen. I look forward to a lot of simple pleasures, like reading books that I want to read, but just for pleasure, spending more time with family and friends, and, and some traveling, have a few ideas.
What a great video. Thank you very much. And what a loss to our district. Thank you all for joining us this evening. No further business before this board, we stand adjourned. Thank you.